To reply, the United States of America. To truly honor the privilege and standing of our nation under God, in equal will, with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for joining our January 21st meeting. To start, we'll have a little ceremony for a new officer that'll be joining our ranks. So to start, I just need to do a resolution moving forward to, for the, for the hire, and then we'll go through a presentation of swearing in. So if I could have a motion for Resolution 25-0015 to approve the employment of Jose Puel as a part-time police officer at the hourly salary of $28.
Motion.
Motion second, please.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. With one absent. And, excuse me, this evening, he became a little ill this afternoon at work, so he will not be with us this evening.
We told him he's not allowed to share his jobs.
Yeah, stay home. So, okay, so with that, Christine, if you would like Jose, if you don't mind coming up. Chief, if you'd like to join him.
Sure.
And if you'd like to stand next to him. Are you gonna video? All right.
Okay, raise your name, please, and repeat after me. I, Jose Puel.
Aye, Jose Puel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of New York.
And the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of part-time village police officer.
Of part-time village police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. He's welcome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Chris, is that she the talker again?
What's that?
Is she gonna be the talker again?
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Brian.
No, you want to.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that slight intermission. Thank you. So next, we just public comment on agenda items, if anybody? Yes, ma'am?
May I, for our court? Hold on. Okay, get the. Resolution 009, updated sidewalks and curbs. The location, two new locations of water update.
I'm sorry, which one are you talking about?
Towards the bottom.
0019.
On the back. It's the one that you had.
0019, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the one you had to add.
Yeah, these two locations, this is a project, a DOT project, that came in front of us, and actually has been probably in progress for, for probably a year and a half at this point. The two locations are Price Crossing and West Main Street across the street from the middle school. They're redesigning and putting in new ADA ramps. So in doing so, they, and because of the property that surrounds it, its village, they had to go through this crazy process to get to the point of...
And were required to know it, or is...
They're doing the work. It's a, it's a DOT project, yes.
Right.
Yeah, it's all them.
By course, and I say it.
No. Nope.
And Resolution 0014, the carnival.
Yes.
I boarded up last year after the carnival. Grass still hasn't grown there. I think I tried to put grass on there, it hasn't happened. Is there stipulation about a catch basin for the generator? Prevent them from dropping five gallons a year?
Yeah, we, we did talk to them about it. There'll be some type of containment underneath either the generator. By the time they got back out there to remove the dirt, put in topsoil and the grass seed, it was probably Octoberish. So we'll see what happens in the spring if that grass takes. But yeah, we'll, there will be some kind of containment under these things and being followed. And we'll take pictures of everything as it is before, so if there is some kind of damage, that they're aware of it. And they're very willing to repair and take care of any particular issues if there's ruts, or if there's grass that's been damaged to put seed down and anything else that needs to be done.
Got you. Any updates on the budget? Is getting state feedback?
We actually had a conference call today. They're gonna send us, I would say they had some comments where they felt in water fund and sewer fund, they thought we might be short, not budgeting enough, but we felt that the budget, we were comfortable with what the expenditures were, so that potentially, and we budgeted, in some cases, like sewer, some substantial money, because if we do have a break, it's a substantial amount of money to fix these things. Like, I think I said at the last meeting, that with the building they call an SVR, there was a pump and an arm and something like that, it was almost $20,000. So we kinda get higher on the budget side, we don't anticipate spending that unless, obviously, something breaks. It was the main focus. And they had something on workman's comp, we were working on company insurance, they thought we were a little low on that, and we showed them today that we were, they thought they had another payment that needed to be paid, we were gonna get another invoice, basically, but we showed them today that we had received all four bills and we paid everything and we're, we're up to snuff. The good news is, they didn't complain about anything being over budget, in a sense, so once we get that information, hopefully tomorrow, next day, then we'll digest it, and if there's any comments, we'll respond to them, so residents know what, what we're looking at. But it was kinda minor stuff at the end of the day.
Is there another meeting before?
No, after tonight, will be at February 2nd or 3rd.
They can still write your comments.
Yeah, I mean, the comment period was still open, we haven't received any emails, but that, that's still open.
Yeah.
I'm sorry? Yeah, another meeting, yep. Okay, any other questions? Yes, Eric.
Yeah, Eric, I'm in 30 at Woodfield. 0011, we're talking about, you know, paying for fireworks, what's, what's the cost of the village on that? I mean, not, not only is it the fireworks, it's all of the other things that come along with that event.
Yeah, it's $9,500 for the fireworks. We normally, we'll be doing the same thing this year, like we did the last two, we apply for a Orange County grant through tourism, and it normally covers at least half of, of the expenses.
I assume that the other half would be budgeted for, or could be budgeted for?
I'm sorry?
Have we budgeted for the full $9,500 in...
Yes.
Our budget, so that if we don't get a grant, we're not...
Yes.
At a deficit?
Yes.
The events committee pieces for the band, I mean...
I'm sorry?
The events committee pieces covers the band, that's not on the village.
No, no, the, the entire...
It's about the fireworks.
The cost of the fireworks, I'm talking about.
Yes, the fireworks are budgeted, and...
And the event.
Yeah.
And then the same thing with, I mean, we haven't approved the budget yet, but it looks like with 0017, we're gonna accept the list of events for the year, not knowing whether or not the budget is there or not there for these events?
Well, these events, other than the overtime, which is budgeted, is true, all the, all the cost is on the event committee. So the money that they raise through vendors and whatever means, that money is turned right back into the event. And whatever money, say, they make in Wichitaville, they'll throw into Whoville, and it just continues to rotate.
And then I just have one more.
Sure.
I see that we have, Locksmith PD got a grant, which is great to hear, for $175,000.
Mm-hmm.
Was that, when I looked over the budget, I didn't see that listed anywhere in the budget. Is that additional funds for them, or is that gonna reduce things out of the budget?
That will be additional, because at the time, if we get the certified letter saying we, you know, 100%, I mean, we've got the verbal and, and we've signed off on it, and they're saying it's just going through its paces, once we get it, then it'll be an additional revenue of $175,000, which the chief has earmarked for certain purchases already, and we needed to do that for the grant. So money in and then money out. But that'll be...
I just wanted to try to understand if we were...
Yeah.
If it was taking anything out of what their current budget is, or if it's additional money for the...
No, we didn't. $175,000, and it's saving us $175,000 at the end of the day. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. So moving on to announcements and so forth, just wanna bring to the attention that our downtown area has been very busy, and the great news is with new businesses. So there is a new body by Julie over at the Brotherwood Plaza, which recently opened, had a grand opening this past Friday and Saturday. There, that was just a, an opening, I'll call it, a soft opening. They're planning on a grand opening in a couple of weeks, which, you know, the village and Chamber of Commerce and everybody will be there for that. So we're really excited about that. Also, just as a reminder, recently, Prismatic, which is now in the old Chase Bank, the stone building on the corner, wonderful store, great stuff in there, the owner is fantastic, recommend everybody, you know, get an opportunity and stop by and see them. We had a locksmith in the downtown area that is being replaced now with a florist that dumped, she hasn't kinda returned the paperwork yet with the name of the florist, but if you look at the window as you're driving, say, towards the schools, it's on the right-hand side, next to the, that, what is it called? Tamper Pooch, thank you. You'll see the windows decorated, she did a beautiful job, so really anticipating some real good stuff there. So there's lots of activity, and for everybody, you know, think local first, think your downtown shops, their mom and pops for the most part, people just working hard, and it would be great for our residents, especially us, to support our downtown areas and, and all of our local businesses would be, before you start running out to the box stores, if at all possible. Okay? Next, the Orange County Mobile Motor Vehicle will be at the Village Hall on Monday, February 3rd, times we have not received, but I would assume they'll be the same as they've been in the past, which is, I think, 10, 9?
10 to 12.
10 to 12.
And then 1 to 3:30.
And then 1 to 3:30.
3:30.
So at the end of the day, they do everything except for the...
Written examinations.
The written exams, right.
Parmit test.
That has not changed, so everybody is really, actually, a lot of people have been asking, where is the, where is the DMV? So we got that. Next is Greenlight Networking. So this is a new company that's coming into the area for internet service, nothing yet, I believe, about TV, but it is Wi-Fi, so you have a smart TV. You'll be able to, you know, watch your favorite channels over your smart TV. So the plan for these guys is that they're gonna, they made application to install some cabling underground where it needs to be done, potentially Newcastle area, probably Stone Ridge areas that already have underground utilities, and the rest of the village would be above poles and, and all that good stuff. We'll be able to share some of their information, and I think they wanna try to be done towards the end of this year. We're kinda going through the planning, we wanna know what streets they wanna hit first. We obviously don't want, they're gonna be mostly boring, they won't be using any kind of backhoe excavator kind of things, or roads that have been paved, they will not touch those. And just to give you an idea, which I think I had their pricing, but I think their general internet service, I had at $55 a month, and they go up to two gigs if you have some real reason to have that type of data. So stay tuned for that, as they start their work, we'll be in touch with the neighborhoods that will be affected through the construction, and anything that disturbing of lawns and things like that, they'll be probably in the right of ways, that, those areas will obviously be repaired and seeded, et cetera, so we'll be working hand in hand with them. Next is, I don't know, Don, if you wanna give an update about the comprehensive plan, what we've done to date? Anything?
Okay. There was a public hearing with the comm committee last month. The committee had recommended the new comprehensive plan to the board, so it is in our hands at this point. We still need the environmental stuff on there, we need both the, well, the plan was already sent to the county, and the village board will be holding a public hearing at some point. We are also still considering some of the comments that were made from that public hearing as recommended by the comm committee.
Wasn't there like two other issues before they were submitted?
Two, well, the zoning piece has still not been released, that's still being considered. The plan went to the county.
Got you.
Is that what you were referring to?
Yeah, the, the...
Well, like I said, the public, that was part of the public comment, and so...
When they voted on it, it was on, when they voted against it, pertaining to two, I don't know, it was two?
It was pending with the recommendation that we will consider the public comment, not just one public comment, but all the public comments, so we have been discussing it, we are, we are... We'll give you an update when we have one.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next, we already touched base on this, the regular board meeting, February 3rd, is the day that we will be passing the budget, basically, towards the, we're actually the last day that we need to do that, and again, we were waiting for any kind of comments, and anything coming down from OSC, the State Controller's Office, if there was any thing that needed to be added or changed in the budget. And right now, that does look like recommendations, not strong changes or mandatory changes, I'll call it. So, but more to come, again, once we get their letter. We've discussed the upcoming events, those will be posted online, and, you know, please look at that, because there is a, a lot of different events that will be going on, as we did last year. Let's see. We did add a, on our face, on our website, on the homepage, we did add, there's kind of a red box, kind of pinkish, but we put emergency contact hours in there, or telephone numbers for anybody that has a need, had a conversation with a couple of residents when they were trying to reach a certain department, and they were just calling their regular numbers on weekends, and obviously, that's not gonna work. So we put that on the website, and basically, it defaults all departments to the police department at 9123. If they're unavailable, of course, it rolls over to the 911 center, but if there's any emergency, the police contact them, be it water mains, sewer mains, whatever the emergency is, so we can respond to it appropriately. Let's see. So there was another road that we recently, probably back in December at this point, was actually through the December 4th to the 12th, it was the intersection of Capitol and Revere. We analyzed 3,151 cars, and speed limit on that road happens to be 25. There were a number of average speeds, there were some 7%, I'll say, were faster in the 48 mile per hour range, which could have equated to potentially 236 violations, and the slowpoke, wherever it was, was only doing six miles an hour. So, that could be my wife, bless it. So just to give you a little bit more information, we'll continue to do this and use this information throughout the year to give it to the residents, and if we've, you know, hopefully, everybody pays attention, because we all live here, it's our own, our own, you know, our, one big family, so just be careful when you're driving, and if we're late, hitting the gas isn't gonna get you there maybe so much faster, but just to be safe. If anybody wants that information, it's available, we'd be happy to share that with you. And number nine, our police department, as we mentioned already, received the grant for $175,000, and the paperwork is in the works. Chief, I don't know if you want to add anything in particular?
Just that we applied and we accepted, so we're gonna, it's for vehicle, it's for equipment, so one car this year, or two cars this year. We originally budgeted for one car, so it's kinda helping out the budget.
Right.
And then it's red dot optics for rifles that we were gonna budget for, and then also more technology cameras for our downtown area, so that cost should cover everything.
Great.
But we have to use it before September, so we gotta really start moving.
No worries, we're ready to go when you're ready to go. And great job, by the way, you netted a lot of money, and I know I think the year before, we, we really didn't get anything out of that grant, and this year, it turned out to be terrific, so thank you.
Yeah, that's the most that I think the police department's gotten in a long time.
Yeah.
And with that, and $99,500 from last year, it's really helping out, that's for mostly the cameras.
Right.
And that should start, we will certainly soon start deploying that.
Yeah. And, yeah, maybe just an update on the camera scene, is that we had received the server, a lot of the hardware did come in, and now it's being bench tested with the cameras, and they're getting ready, hopefully, maybe a month, hopefully, if the weather gets a little bit better, we can start to deploy the cameras in the downtown area. Memorial Park and our sewer plant are our main, kinda number one areas to hit, and I think the cameras downtown will be tremendous, because there's just a lot of activity. Our license plate readers are doing a wonderful job, and that's throughout the entire county when we need to track something down. It, it's amazing how that system works, and, you know, as an example, recently, we had a car stolen, and it was recovered pretty, pretty quickly, or at least identified, and, you know, the person was apprehended at the end of the day, so...
Close to 24 hours.
Yeah, so it's, you know, the systems are good, the cameras are great, so we'll continue to work in that direction. Something that's not on your agenda under the announcements, I just wanted Susan to just give a quick update on the water and sewer re-levees, and where we are with that.
The re-levees are up, unfortunately, from last year, so the re-levees are taking place. We are not accepting any payments now at this time, it will show up, unpaid bills will show up on people's taxes for the 5% penalty.
Thank you. All right, moving on to resolutions. Resolution 25-0011 to authorize July 4th Ever Fireworks Display Inc. to conduct the village fireworks at Ellveron Port. On Saturday, July 5th, rain date would be Sunday, the 6th. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 401. Next, Resolution 25-0012 to authorize cemental of grant beautification application to Green County Bank in the amount of $9,000 for the beautification of EJ McLaughlin Square. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 401. Next, Resolution 25-0012 to authorize cemental of grant beautification application to Green County Bank in the amount of $9,000 for the beautification of EJ McLaughlin Square. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 401. Next, Resolution 25-0013 to approve independent telecommunications ITC price quotation for the telephone system at Village Hall and Department of Public Works in the amount not to exceed $750.08 per month, once it's installed, and it's a five-year contract.
I'll make that motion with pleasure.
I have a second.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 401. Resolution 25-0014 to approve the public assembly permit for the Knights of Columbus Free Garden, the annual carnival will be out Thursday, May 22nd through May 26th, from 6:00. And let me just make a correction on the time, so the Thursday and Friday will start at 6:00 and end at 10:00. Saturday and Sunday, it's from 12:00 to 10:00, and then on Monday, the hours are 2:00 to 8:00. And that will all be published, I just wanna make the correction, 'cause that was incorrect on the application itself, so we made that correction. Okay, and again, it's at Ellveron Port. Have a motion, please? I have a motion, second.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 401. We did the resolution for Rose, so you can relax back there. Resolution 25-0016 to approve the employment of Lenka McCormick as secretary to the planning board, zoning board, building department, at an hourly salary at $22. Did you get start, did we figure it start again?
Yes, January 12, 2020.
29, okay. And start date of the January 29th, obviously, 2025. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any questions?
For disclosure, she is a friend of mine.
Right. Okay.
I just wanna make those announcements. Right.
No monkey business. Okay, any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 401. Resolution 25-0017 to accept Washingtonville Event Committee list of events and activities for the year 2025. Have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 401. Resolution 25-0018 to amend Resolution Number 24-0158 entitled "Accepting Offers of Dedication Related to the Highgrove Subdivision" to include the following street names: Highgrove Drive, Hopkins Court, and Ambrose Ways. Have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Comment? We're doing this because when the resolution was done, we didn't, you actually have the name of the streets we used, which you would think would be sufficient with section block and block numbers, but the state or the county wanted to see the names, so we're just amending it. Any other questions or comments? If not, have a, have a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 401. Resolution 25-0019 to authorize the upgrade of various sidewalks, curb ramps to the, for ADA compliance to improve pedestrian safety, and specifically, at the corner of Price Crossing and Route 208, and the second location is West Main Street across the street from the middle school. Have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second? Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 401. Last would be a Resolution 25-0020 to authorize the budget transfers and amendments as follows, necessary to effect the necessary transfers of funds and to pay the village warrants. Have a motion?
No.
Have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
401. And just to note, in our A Fund, which is basically like police, DPW, Village Hall, the payment for this particular two-week period is $105,954.94. And in our water fund, $82,494.04. And in our sewer, payment was $18,978.33. Point of connection. Okay. Public comment? Okay. If not, we do have a reason for executive session to discuss personnel. No decisions will be made in the sense of a vote, so we'll have to get to that. No decisions will be made in the sense of a vote, so not really having to hang. I'd like to thank everybody for coming, appreciate you coming out, it's really cold, cold evening, and be safe coming home. Thank you.
Mayor, you do need to vote to go into the executive session.
Oh, you're right, we do. Have a motion to move into executive session?
Motion.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks, Mr. Attorney.